...to reduce the current setback to five feet, four inches, to bring the structure into conformance and allow for future additions. Wesley Joiner, agent for Catherine Bostick, owner.
So right here is the survey from, I believe, the seventies, showing that the structure has been there for quite some time. Property was built in nineteen forty-one, and it is also believed that the garage addition is also, was also built in forty-one. Here's the picture of the structure. Here is a cutout from the R buoy that is currently in process for the property. As you see right, there's already a permit.
Was there a permit applied for this?
Yes. So you also see the current configuration versus the proposed configuration, as well as an elevation. We did have one comment of concern. The adjacent property owner was not necessarily against the project, but had some current concerns about on-street parking and right-of-way congestion. Here are your possible motions. Staff does recommend approval due to the conditions of non-conformity being existent prior to the enactment of the ordinance. That is all.
Didn't we do something in, right in this neck of the woods?
Yeah, so the neighboring property was also, had a variance to the side yard setback some time ago.
Of the new house?
Yes.
And wasn't this person, didn't this person, whoever this, come speak in favor of that?
I cannot recall. I do know that the variance was granted for the other property, the same as the agent for this property.
Okay. All right, any, anybody got any questions for staff?
I do, yeah. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning.
As the lay guy here, can you help me understand some wording? If it says bring into conformance, does that, right now that garage setback is out of conformance with the new ordinance because it was built in nineteen forty-one?
Correct, so the current side, side slash rear yard setback would be seven for this property. It's current, the setback line goes through the structure. So it'd be a non-conforming structure, so you could repair it, you could paint it, but you couldn't expand it. You couldn't add to it, or you couldn't connect something else to it.
But it's already in the setback, right?
Yes.
So then...
It was there before the setback.
Right. But now with the new setback, it's, so it extends into the setback, but that's okay. Right, so does that mean that this is being knocked down to bring it into conformance? It's out of conformance by the new ordinance. Am I, am I understanding correctly?
Yes.
So is it being knocked down, and that's what brings it into conformance, and then they're gonna, and then they wanna, it's gonna be a new build? That's what I was trying to understand.
We issue a variance that brings it into conformance.
Yep, so when we issued a variance, it'll reduce that setback so that the structure is in conformance.
Okay, there's, okay, going at it two different ways. Thank you, okay.
Okay, any more questions for staff? Okay, all right, is there Mr. Joiner here speaking in favor of Mr. Bostick?
Good morning, really appreciate all coming out for, it looks like this is the only thing on the agenda, really appreciate that. I was here two years ago asking a variance for my property, and Katie...
You're the one behind it?
I'm the one behind it.
Oh, okay.
And y'all...
Could you state, give us your name for the record?
Wesley Joiner.
And your relationship to the project, your agent?
Next-door neighbor.
Next-door neighbor.
And y'all generously granted my variance, and my project's almost done. And the reason we're requesting this variance is Katie's laundry room is in the garage. So what we want to do is build a connection between her home and the garage, so she can go do laundry when it's raining and not have to walk outside. And when you changed the structure in any way, Chris has coached me that it's required to, to bring the structure into conformity even though it was built a long, long time ago. And so that's the nature of this request, is that she wants to make an addition on the other side to connect it to her home.
Okay. All right.
And I'm the neighbor that has the, that this variance is, I own this property and this property, she owns this property. So this five foot, four inches is, is, I would be the neighbor most impacted.
Okay, so your law is contiguous, contiguous, contiguous to her? Touches you, contiguous, yeah.
Yeah, she, I'm totally in favor of it, I think just, it's a, you know, it would be...
Well, she's already been there for years.
Yeah, there's nothing I could do about it anyway, so, yeah.
All right, okay.
I got a question. Chris, can we pull up the survey, please? All right, so looking at the renderings that are in the packet that we received, so one thing I'm seeing right here is that building is set back a little bit from the front of the building. What is the plan? Is it to tear that down and then just build a new two-story garage? Because that's what the renderings show.
Probably, because the, the garage is, you know, it's lived its useful life. We want to replace it with something very similar, but it's been flooded several times.
Gotcha.
It's, it's just not, there's, there's the ability for rodents to get in, it would be better to rebuild it. And the connect, the, the space between the house is going to become storage and a walkway, is the intention.
Well, here, here's where I'm at on it. I'm in favor of a variance if the building stays and it's just tied together to grant it, because it is, is existing and I understand that. If you're gonna tear it down, then you need to build by the new rules that needs to be within compliance. So if, I'm not on board with granting a variance just so you can tear it down and just so you can gain that foot and a half. You've got almost seven feet between the buildings, move the building over.
I, I understand, and the reason, the main reason that I want to start over is because it's ground level. And so if I'm able to tear it down, or she is, then we're able to build it up an extra two feet. And that's not full conformity, but it actually brings it in line with the house and it gets it off of, off of grade. So it allows me to build a better structure. Now, I could work within those, those guidance rules and just add on to the structure, but it would be ground level. And I think it would just be much better product at the end if I was able to essentially build what's here, but do it with modern construction, above-grade. And, you know, it would aesthetically be very similar.
I don't disagree with that, but if you can bring it into compliance or make it better by ringing it up, then you can take a foot and a half off the outside. That's just my opinion on it. I've had a particular project on Jekyll Island that was encroaching on like three corners, and we tore a third of the house down and rebuilt it within. Instead of trying to get a variance, we just brought it back within and dealt with the current parameters. I sympathize with it being this old of project, and I mean, you know, I live right around the corner from here, I walk by there twice a week going to Crab Trap. So I'm, you know, familiar with it, but I just, my position on this board, I'm not, me personally, I can't speak for my colleagues, I'm just not on board just to grant a variance, just so you can gain that extra space. If, if it's gonna stay existing and you want to tie it together and the building remain, that's a different story. But, you know, you stated in your application and here that the intent is to tear it down. And just, as a builder, if you're gonna tear it down and go to that trouble, you need to conform with the current laws as they current, are on the books today. That's, that's my opinion.
Is there a problem with doing that? You just had to make the storage area twenty inches smaller?
It's a tight structure as is, and it, I didn't anticipate that. I mean, I, I understand the comment. My, when I build something, my, my mentality is I want to try to make it as conforming as possible and as safe as possible. And if, if you're gonna spend the money to, to edit the structure, it should be done right. And I feel like to do it right would be to, to tear it down. And I think, in my opinion, it's a fair request to ask to maintain that line of encroachment, because it's just been there forever. And even if you're rebuilding it, it's, I think we should be able to maintain that line respectfully.
No, I understand, and I, I'm the same way too. If, if I'm gonna fix something, you know, I tell people upfront, when I bid a job, I'm not, if you're looking for cheap, I'm not your cheap guy. Because if it needs fixing, I'm gonna fix it. So I, I totally understand where you're coming from.
And I see the one...
But again, that goes to my point. If you're gonna spend the total to do it right, why not build it to the current conforming rules? These rules were put here for a reason. They were changed back whenever they were to help cut down on some of these encroachments, to prevent more of them happening. And, you know, I'm, I'm being asked to, to let someone tear down something and then just build something brand-new right back. Well, what about the next person that comes in here next month and wants to do the exact same? You know, and then I get the argument, well, you let him do it, why can't I do it?
No, I respect the position that you're in. Yeah, I, I respect that position, and it, one and a half feet doesn't seem like a lot, but when you're, when you're manipulating a very small structure, it, it, it was very challenging. And I felt like it was better to come to y'all and request a variance to where that wall is, to say it's not gonna encroach more, but this is where we'd like it to stay. And I'm gonna build a safe structure there that, that fits the neighborhood.
I have a question, are you, are you a builder?
Excuse me, are you a contractor?
No, I'm not. I'm a financial advisor.
Okay.
My contractor is TJ Diott, and I don't know if she's gonna be selecting, who she's selecting to build the structure. I think she has a list of three or four people. But she's asked me to help her because I've been through this variance process. And this is not her, you know, this is not her favorite thing to do, is come up to the courthouse and speak, so...
So, well, excuse me. Personally, I didn't get a chance to go look at this property before this meeting. I don't know if any of my other colleagues did or not. Would you entertain a deferral until we could go look at the property and see what we think about that? You, you on board that? I mean, I know it'll give you another month, but at least, we want to, I want to give you a fair shot. What, what you're asking for and what Cliff is saying is a double-edged sword, and we want to be fair.
Yes, sir.
But we also need to kind of follow our rules. So if we could defer this for a month and give us a chance to go look at it and study it, then we might can make a better decision.
I would much rather have a deferral than a denial, so absolutely, I'll give you that opportunity.
Yeah, I'm totally fine, because that's the same thing. I want you guys to, to make an educated decision, so I'm a hundred percent fine with that.
I mean, honestly, I can't tell heads or tails from that, from that survey or the drawings or whatever. So I would, I just want to be able to make a well-informed decision for y'all and for us.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any rendering of what she wants to do? I saw, I saw it, I, I, because, I mean, I'm, I'm on board with Cliff. The, I mean, you got seven feet, or six foot nine, and, and the, you could, if you tear it down and/or you're going up, you, that foot and a half, I would vote against a deferral, I would, I'm, but it's, I'll, I'll follow with what my other members want to do. But the, because you're going, it's a single-story now and you're gonna go two-story. If that foot and a half is gonna make a difference, you, you're picking up a lot of extra square foot.
Let me explain why. This rendering's a little out of date. The garage looks like it's right to the wall, but you see that there's two windows upstairs. It's not a current, it's not currently in her budget to put a storage room up there, but she wants to build an art studio. She owns Viola's Market, and she does a lot of her own, makes a lot of her own products. And I think the future of this space upstairs will be to have a small art room. And to get up there, you'll need a staircase, and we have specific rules on how wide staircases have to be. That's why we needed that extra one and a half feet, as a future, a potential staircase to get to a small room upstairs.
And a potential, and what Mr. Trayhorn's concerned, she owns, now it's gonna be an art studio, when she, if and when she sells it, it's, that's another... to be this art studio when she, if and when she sells it, it's, that's another, another room for people renting on the island and congested. That's, that's a tight area over there. And I'm just not on board giving somebody a blank check. And that's basically what, what I see being asked for.
Well, what's, what's, I, I would hope that anyone who wants to make a modification after they get approval for what they've submitted would get another permit. And if they don't, then, then we would find out they were building unpermitted and we would say you, you can't turn this into another livable unit. And I don't think if you saw the space, you, you would see that that's, there's not enough space up there to make it a, a rental or it, it literally, it's just a storage room. Like a ten by ten room. Once you put a staircase there, it's a small space.
I had an eight by eight bedroom when I was growing up. So I mean, it's, you know.
But would you rent that?
You, you'd be surprised what people rent. I mean, you'd be surprised what, I mean, it's, that's questionable. I mean, anyway, it, that's, that's where I stand. But, uh, if, uh, if you get four, four, four to one, you got a deferral. Vote.
My comment would be, I know it's not New York, but I just saw it just about thirty minutes ago before I came. It was crazy article. Somebody's renting a nine by eight, seventy-two square foot room for thirteen, thirteen hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Here?
No, not here.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, so I'm just saying that happens.
Yeah.
But here, here's the thing. I just wanted to let you know, just so, and I, I will, will vote in that direction. I just want to let you know, number one, you may have answered my question about the staircase situation, though I really don't understand it that well. I was going to say to you, if you've got six point, if you've got six, nine between the edge of the, the inside edge of the garage and the house, then why not just eat the one point, the, the one foot eight inches on that side? That was going to be my comment and I understand what you said, so you don't even need to address that. But I just want to let you know that I'm not on board for a referral. And the reason being is be, deferral, I'm sorry, uh, deferral. And I'm not on board, um, because in my estimation as the layperson and I was, and that's why I asked Chris, um, and I understood it coming from both sides, but it didn't sway me in terms of what I was going to, my, what I was hanging my hat on was that I don't feel that I should vote yes for a variance on a new build. And I know it was, it was echoed by some, my, my colleague, I think, um, Cliff here, so that every time somebody comes in with a new build and they say, well, we'd like to extend it two feet in, um, why do we have the ordinance? And I feel that's why I'm sitting here. So I just wanted to be straight with you right, right from the get-go so that I know you said you would entertain the deferral. I just want, you know, I'm not on board for it.
I, I understand your concern. I've lived here since ninety-two, so I understand how we have to make sure that we're maintaining the culture and the, the history of St. Simon's and why this procedure is so important. I think, uh, this is two processes. One is a new build and one is making this structure conforming. If it burned down or whatever it may be, she would have to have this to rebuild it where it is now. I think if she had to choose, she would say, no big deal. We just won't do the two-story. We'll connect it so it's a connected laundry room with a storage unit. So if the second story is the issue, then I think we'd much rather say, okay, let's make the structure conforming and allow her to connect it and we won't do the two-story. That'll just take a rewrite of the plans.
Well, that, that's kind of, you know, explaining my point is if that structure that is there stays there, I would, it's a different ask if you just want to tie the two together. If you wanted to that, the existing garage and just tie it straight into the house and not demo or do anything to it, that's a different ask than what you're asking to tear down and use space that is not there. Administrative variances happen all the time where we document. I've had multiples. I've got neighbors, there's one, two doors down from me that just got one that the house was built a long time ago. He wasn't proposing any changes. He just wanted to sell the house and it was exposed that the house was encroaching. So it was just documented as to what's there. That's one thing, but you're, like my colleague mentioned, you're asking to tear something down and then put it back just because it was there. You know, and that, that's where the problem is. If you're going to tear it all the way down, then you bring it all the way into conformance. You can, you know, eat up that foot and a half somewhere else. What, what's the width on the, the current garage, the one that's there now?
I'm not sure. It's, it's about.
Ten feet, twelve feet, give or take?
What's the size of a standard single garage?
All right, so a single garage. Say if it's twelve feet.
So there's an extra foot on, maybe not even a foot.
I just can't read it.
Yeah. All right, so just for argument's sake, say if you've got twelve feet in the garage, the existing garage, and you've got almost seven feet between the two, that's nineteen feet. If you lose a foot and a half of that, you still got seventeen and a half foot of space to bring it back into conformance and then you can build what you want. Just lose that foot and a half off the left side. If you're going to demo it, then, then you bring it over and that still gives you, you know, seventeen or even sixteen feet. That's still plenty big for a washer and dryer and a studio and, and a set of stairs.
These are certainly fair requests for me to discuss with Katie. She, she was going to be here today, but she tested positive for COVID this morning. So.
We appreciate that.
I would, yeah. I would have to, you know, talk to her about the concessions. I think, I, I know that she would be, if, if it's, if it's about the upstairs, I think she'd much rather have the connection between the two structures and, and to be allowed to do that.
And it's not just about the upstairs, it's the-
And leave the structure.
Yeah. That's, that's where the determining factor is. If the structure comes down, then I'm not on board with putting it back there. That's, that's what we're talking about. It is just, yeah, if it comes down, then it needs to be built back within the current conformity.
So we need to defer it then? If. Would, uh, you be on board if he, uh, if they wanted to leave the existing structure but add to it?
I would be on, I would be okay if he left the existing structure, tied the two together. If he tears it down, he needs to, he needs to shift it over a foot and a half a mess. Just, I mean, I'm, I, I, if, if, if it's possible to make a motion-
He leaves the existing structure?
Leave the existing, leave the existing structure.
Can he add to the existing structure?
Um, can't, I, I would.
I mean, connecting it is one thing, connecting is one thing, but if you want to make it a little bit bigger, like a little bit deeper.
Any, any change in any dimension of the structure will require another variance. I mean, it's really tight where it is and-
Well, I was just asking what their opinion would be.
No, I under, yeah, okay. Just letting you know, if, if another change happens, uh, it will have to be requested of you to make that change in the future.
I know, I'm just trying to get an idea whether there would be a for or against adding on, instead of just connecting it, add, maybe make it a little bit bigger. Would that be a problem?
I would want to go back and read specifically in the, in our ordinances how the wording is. I think it is in, if I remember correctly, that if we grant the variance for it to be where it is, you can do modifications.
Didn't we do something on Magnolia Street?
Yeah, but as long as you don't increase the encroachment.
We just had one on Magnolia Street.
If he did add on, if I, if I'm remembering right, and you may be able to answer this for me. If he adds on to the back, he's not increasing the encroachment.
Yeah, so what you can do, the original request was an administrative variance which would allow for, uh, the structure to be where it is. But to connect to it, you would have to have another variance. So that's kind of where we, that's where we are today. So we already have the permit in for this.
Is there a record of the one, what we did on Magnolia Street just a couple of meetings ago?
The one on Magnolia Street? Can't recall.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I believe that, that was an administrative variance to bring it in conformance and all they, they weren't changing the-
Something similar to this, it was the garage that was out of conformance and they were, they were adding to it and connecting it to the house.
Yep. The front of the house, the front porch was out of conformance. It was too close. I believe it was fifteen or sixteen feet or whatnot. They wanted to do additions to the side. So they weren't adjusting where the original structure was, they were just building on to it.
Okay.
So, and like I said, maybe you can answer this. If, in, in the rules that, trying to think how to word this. So, so if, if we, I, I agree that the administrative variance documents what's there. The variance, we have to grant a variance to allow the two to tie together because now they become one structure. And that's the, the current garage remaining where it is. But when we grant that variance, how's it worded in, in the rules? Does it say that it, that they can modify the structure, but just not increase the encroachment? So if I remember correctly, and you may know better, I'd really like to go back and read it, so that if we did grant the variance to tie the two together, he would be able to add on to the back of the structure, but not the structure toward the encroachment.
Correct. So he could, if you grant this variance, he can build it however he want, however they want.
He could tie the two structures in.
He could build it up and he could do all of those things.
Or go out back, but that, that wall that is sitting on the encroachment.
Cannot move.
Cannot move or come down. Okay.
Well, can we, can we amend the, uh, proposed request to include that? As long as, you know, we can, we can add to it, we can add to it as long as it doesn't further encroach and doesn't, doesn't destroy the old building?
Basically, that's just like granting the, the, the proposal with conditions.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So help, help, I got to use Mike's word. Help me understand. There's already been a building permit issued for this and, and the drawings, I'm assuming, because like I said, I couldn't read the, some of the drawings on, on our computer, the, the, uh-
These are the drawings from the permit.
So that shows it inside the setback. See, these drawings were okay, but he's there wanting to expand it? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, so these, this permit came in, uh, it was marked as non-compliant and, uh-
So it's been held up for our approval?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, well, you, I, I understood a permit had been issued. That's what I thought, that's what I-
Yeah, it's not issued, but a permit has been requested or applied for.
And the request for a new, that's a new bill?
This is the part of the permit.
For a new bill?
Yes.
Okay, that's okay. I just want to make sure that I'm not, I'm not, I'm a senator's clerk.
Well, we could make, we could, we could amend the proposed application to say they can add to the existing struc, structure, but the existing structure has to remain. Would that placate everybody?
One second. We're looking at this drawing here.
So what's the setback in the back? Why you just kept referring to adding on to the back of it? Does, would that encroach the setback in the back?
No, so.
Doesn't look like you can go very far off the back.
So right here is the rear. There's, there's room in the rear, um, but yeah, it's kind of too, too, it's a side slash rear. So here's the front and here is the rear. And these are, this is technically a corner and this is a side.
All right, so, so technically, if that's the rear, shouldn't the setback be ten or is it seven and then everything?
So it's ten right here. This one is, uh, seven because there's a property right here.
Actually, she owns a lot back behind it, right?
Then what's the setback on the short side? What we're, what, what I'm thinking is the back, what we're talking about, like the back. Can you go back?
Yep.
That. So you look at the garage on the left. Now you gotta go, go over.
Yeah, here's the garage.
All right, right there.
Yep.
What's that, what's that setback? Yeah.
Seven foot.
Seven feet.
So that how would that, so we keep saying you can go back, but then you-
There's, there's not much room. There, there's maybe a foot or so back there, but yeah, there's, there's not that much.
So it's not enough. All right, just to clarify for me, because based on other projects, if Union, if the house is fronted on Union, that's, the address is on Union, so that's technically the front of the house. So the back of the house should be the, the property line in question. So to me, based on how I interpret it, that setback should be ten, not seven.
Oh, it's-
I know it's different because it's, it's a corner lot and I know the-
Side setback would be seven, would be ten.
Yeah, side and seven or side and rear setbacks are seven in our six.
Okay, that was, that was the question, was in, in this one, because I thought some of them were, were ten. Okay, that would answer that, nevermind.
Twenty foot and Peachtree Street's ten.
Yeah, Peachtree is ten.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
So they could come forward a little bit, it looks like.
So I'm, I don't, that drawing can't be the scale. If it's five, five off the, the, I call it the back, y'all call it the side. That, I mean, if I'm looking, that's, that's a bit of fifteen feet from the back of the building to going, let me see your pointer, Cliff. See if I can get this here. If that's five, five, that right there, if you, if it to scale, that's got to be a bit of fifteen, sixteen feet.
Yeah, ten or fifteen.
And with-
So right here it has the new structure versus the old. And there's a little bit of a difference. So there's no setback lines on this current configuration, um, versus here.
And I know how to read plans, but I can't make heads or tails. Where are we outside the setbacks on the proposed configuration? Point to that.
So right here is where we are outside of setback.
Well, Peachtree Street's there on the right side of this drawing. This drawing is oriented differently.
So it should be somewhere around here.
Well, it's got the setback on there, isn't that dotted line, the arrow setback on the back or the side?
Yep, yep, there's, there's a setback on the rear, but not on the side. But it, it will be approximately about right here.
What, what was the date on the survey that's there?
Seventy-one.
I would just, I'm sitting here looking, I've, I've got an app that I use frequently. It's pretty accurate when it shows property lines and owners. And looking at this app, it shows the rear of that garage actually encroaching on the other side. I honestly, I would like to see a current survey to know exactly where that building is sitting. As a colleague mentioned that, you know, it doesn't look a hundred percent to scale. You know, before we make a complete decision, I honestly would like to see a, at least have the corner pins marked and a more accurate survey is the actual location of, of where it's at. It, you know, it, it may be that it turns out that it's in your favor, that it's a little further over. It, it may not.
Didn't I see a bill in here, an invoice from SHU surveying where that's- Didn't I see an invoice in here from SHU surveying where the corners were pinned?
I think I've had my corners pinned, which would be part of her corners. So I own this, this piece of property that's in the rear of this garage and to the, the side we're talking about on the left. I own those two pieces of property. So I probably have a survey with my pins marked.
Well, I see it, there's a, oh, and this is, yeah, you're right. This is a bill to you, Wesley Joyner, eleven sixty-four Peachtree Street.
Yes, so I've, I think I've included what I have.
So this is, this is where you marked your corners?
Yes, yes, sir.
Oh, I see.
And that just, you know, marks that one of hers too. And if, if she's be, I think she would be willing to say, we'll work with the existing structure to connect them. And you're right, there is no space in the rear towards my property, nor would I be in favor of expanding that garage any further back. If she wanted to expand that garage back, she would need to come back with a different variance request for that backside of the garage. This, where it is now cannot, it cannot be expanded, maybe a little bit in the front, but the back, it would not be possible with the existing setback line. And I wouldn't be in favor of that either.
Or it probably could be extended to where it lined up with existing house.
And I think she, if, if your concerns are that you don't want certain things to happen to the structure, I think she'd appreciate just a, an approval with, I forget the word, but, you know, amendments to the way it's approved. And she would work within those, those guidelines to, to make the board happy.
You mean if we just go ahead and say that we, we'll give it a variance to comply as it is now?
Correct, with, but this cannot happen. We're not comfortable with it going back anymore. I think she would be fine with that.
Excuse me, I think we're spinning our wheels here. We're, we're. We're okay with giving the variance and connecting to it without doing anything to that garage, not tearing it down or anything. If she wants to tie to it, that's fine. Or if you, if she wants a new garage and tears it down, then we need to move it a foot and a half to make it fit. But I think, and, and knowing building inspection the way I do, they're gonna want to see a new current survey on that. So my suggestion is to defer this. Let's get a survey and, and accurate survey. Well, she, yeah, she gets the survey, excuse me. And then we bring it back and discuss it again. But if, if she's okay with us granting the variance as it sits with no, no construction other than tying the two dwellings together, then we could do that.
Okay, I think she'd be okay with that.
Just tying the two together?
Yes, sir.
And not going up?
I, I think so. I, that's one thing I'd have to talk to her about, but I don't think the space is there without the extra foot and a half for stairs.
So then I suggest that we defer this and, and you, you talk to her. I mean, I, I understand she's not here tonight, today to, you know, for, because of COVID, but like I said, we want to do what's fair. And we also need to cover our, our behinds here too. So let's. If you're okay with deferring it, then that's the motion we need to make.
I, I think we need a survey because nothing, to me, nothing jives on the old survey. And I, I, I don't, the, the old survey, it just, it doesn't, nothing jives. I think we need a current survey.
It looks like from there, a bunch of the, uh, rock we had on to, the back of the rock we had on to, that, uh, survey we made.
Uh, you definitely can tell once you see the inside of the garage that it's all original. It's got really old solid timber and there's no, there's been no additions to it. We, we believe this to, based on the materials that were used and exposed, it's not a finished inside garage, that it is original to, I think, 1943. And she would like to, to be able to, to build up or to the right, but not build to the left or to the front or to the back. And, and I, if a deferral is what we have to do, I, I respect that. She, the, uh, when she submitted this permit, she didn't think that a zoning, a variance would be needed because of the, when the structure was built. We were told it was. So she's following the process. And I think, yes, this is a variance, but for a citizen that's going through the proper channels to request your permission and request the county's permission to do this, I think that should mean something. And I think Katie will not abuse this approval.
I appreciate your oratory, but I got to tell you personally, I feel steamrolled by this, by this whole request. Because going in, you had, and you, you sound so learned that you had to know that obviously it's a new build. And then you're asking for a variance on a new build that contraindicates the ordinance that is there. And so I'm, I'm, I'm feeling really put upon about that. And the other comment I just want to make to you is that I may seem like the old guy, but that doesn't mean I'm not progressive. When you made a comment before, I thought off one of the thing I said about preserving the culture and the other word you used for St. Simon. I'm, I'm a progressive guy. I just feel that, I, I just feel strongly about the, the rules that we have in place to protect everyone
I'm saying that's.
in this process, that's all. And I didn't take it, you know, it wasn't, it's not defensive comment. I just want to let you know that.
It's important to me, having lived here for 30 years. That's why I own two 100-year-old structures that I've renovated so they didn't get torn down. It's very important to me. I wasn't making a comment about you and.
Perfect.
Uh.
No sweat.
It, it was not known. Uh, it, we, there was a neighbor discussion, I think, with another neighbor that had administrative variance that, oh yeah, my house was built in 1940s and it was, it was not a problem. It was done during the permit process. So her submitting this permit without getting the variance first, I don't think should be looked upon as, as a steamroll. It, it was a ignorance.
No, I, I didn't mean it that way. You, then you took that wrong. No, no, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying, based on knowing that it's a new build. That's what I, I came here and I wasn't sure. And I wanted to make sure that I understood it. In fact, this is the only property I haven't gone to see because I didn't understand what was in the packet well enough. And I figured I would, rather than going and looking at something and coming in with any kind of bias, um, I did not want that. I just wanted to come here and, and understand from you folks. And so all I was saying about the steamroll is that now that I look at it and, and complimenting you honestly about being a, a learned guy and, and appreciating your oratory is, is that you know it's a new build. And so why, if you're talking about preserving the culture, why would you want to promulgate a new bill that's going to contraindicate the ordinance that's there for everywhere on St. Simon? So why should it be any different what you're coming here to say? So that's what I meant by being steamrolled, that I got to believe that if you had thought it through like you're talking to me and us about, that I get this, then how does that change anything on St. Simon? Anytime a new build comes with an ordinance? So that, that's, that's all. Thank you. Um, I do want to comment. We, we really do appreciate her going through the proper channels. I mean, we absolutely do. I know we're going back and forth, but just let her know. We really do appreciate it and that's why this process is here. But with that, just because somebody goes through the process doesn't mean we have to grant it. Because then that opens up that can of worms. Well, you let them do it. And trust me, we've seen that. Somebody just come in and said, well, my neighbor two doors down did it. Why can't I do it? Or the other thing that happens quite frequently in some neighborhoods is that when, when they see something like this, say if we grant this or, you know, and you build brand new, somebody else is going to do it without a permit at all. They'll just go in and do it. And then that, that's how these things happen. Then, then we're presented with this case where something is built out of conformity. And then we have to either do an admin or something to get it, basically making it a conforming property. So that's all the stuff that we're trying to prevent. But we really do appreciate her going through the channels we do.
I appreciate the complexity. And if you, and if a deferment is what's needed for y'all to see the structure and to be comfortable with this, then I think that, that's a fair request. I, I would ask that we not, I think the survey is, I might have another survey or she might.
That's optional anyway. I mean, we're not, we're not, we're not making her spend the money to have a survey.
Yeah, that would be my only request is that we.
That's fine. I mean, if she don't want to do it, that's okay too, but.
Because I do have my corner, this corner in the top left marked. And so I think we could, we could pretty quickly tell if this is accurate. And this looks distorted to me the way it's on the screen.
Okay, so we spent enough time doing this. So let's, let's, uh, make, can we make a motion, Mr. Chairman, about deferring? Okay, well, so. Oh, yeah. Right, okay.
Well, we got to do it by the book, so.
I just want to say. I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, I understand that the deferral will probably be voted on. However, in my mind, if we're, if it does not change the application, the application still remains. And I just want to point it out because that's the point that has me, that where I'm hanging my hat on. The application is talking about a new build to contraindicate the ordinance that we have on the books. That's what it comes down to. So my feeling about a deferral, a new survey, doesn't change the fact of the application that they want a new build that's going to, that's not going to, that's not going to be in line with the ordinance.
I'd just like to make, say one thing about that. And the, I think the reason, I, I understand new build, renovation, two different things. But having personally, and she's witnessed me take on a 100-year-old house and discover what it means to rebuild it from the inside out, sometimes I, I wonder if I should have just torn it down and built a brand-new house with new modern building construction that looks exactly the same. And that's really what is important to me is preserving the, what I grew up, the aesthetic, but having a safe structure. So she can, I think, work within the renovation framework. It wasn't just, we want to tear it down to build a new garage. It was, it would be easier to do so. And it would be more challenging to, to, to keep the structure and build around it, but it's possible. I don't think it would be as, as good of a final product, but it, it's possible. I'm saying if, if you, if you're willing to approve it with not tearing the structure down and adding on to it, I think she can agree to that. And the only reason she wanted to do a new build is because we just felt it would be easier. And she would get the extra footage off the ground. We have had flooding concerns in our neighborhood. So there were some, there were some reasons that helped get it more into conformity by lifting it up. And that's why building it new was, was preferable there. But if the board is, has a problem with that, I think that she can work around your concerns.
I have one question that you keep referring to building up. If it's a garage and you build it up two feet off the ground, how you going to get in there with a vehicle?
It's, it's not a two feet. It's about a foot because that garage has dirt on top of it. So to bring it in level with her house, I think it's like a foot and a, maybe a foot and a half, foot and three inches. So it's already elevated more than the house ground level. But I believe her architect has, there's, there's enough space there to elevate the dirt enough to get the proper slope to get into the garage. And it's not used as a garage now. It's used as storage, laundry. I don't anticipate her using it as a garage in the future. It just needs to be in conformance.
So I, what, this, this picture, to me, does not, the, the survey in this picture don't jive at all to me. I mean, that, that, that garage, we're going to call it a garage, is at the very rear of the main structure to the right. The drawing shows them side by side. And I don't know if we're looking at it from a different angle or, or what, but it's, a, a lot of the stuff on these drawings just don't jive. And I mean, I, I'm, I'm just, I, I, I keep referring to blank check. I just, I'm not going, I'm not going to vote yes on a blank check. I mean, we, there's a bunch of different scenarios what she's wanting to do.
This, this is the garage door from this picture.
Okay.
So right here, that, that is this. And this shaded area that's hard to see in this, this is the five foot, four inches from my, my property here. So that is this area right here. And then this small area between the house, I can't read that because my eyes are getting old.
Six nine is what it says.
Six nine, that's, that's about right.
But let me hold your pointer, Mr. Cliff. The picture shows this, what I see is this is way back here on the, on the, on the photograph of the house. It, that doesn't jive with the picture, what I see.
Okay, so, yeah, I think it's the angle of the picture, but there is definitely a little bit of a, a setback here.
I mean, that, it looks like those two, it almost looks like those two eaves, those two eaves are almost hitting each other according to the picture.
Exactly. No, it, there's a big space there.
Well, I, I get this, this, the distance between the two, but that, that garage looks like it's at the rear of the house now. I, I just, just.
Oh, yeah, no, it's not. So I think you, if you need to see it, a better picture of it, absolutely. Is there, do you have like a GP, uh, oh, yeah.
But that right.
Sorry.
That right there, that, that probably goes down like that. That's, that's a corner of the house? And you're saying, what's the, isn't that the width, the depth of that house from there to there?
No.
The garage, no? So that eve goes way back?
Can I find the GIS look down? There you go. So.
It's just hard to see.
It, I mean, I've seen it a hundred times. It's, it's definitely setback from the house. Pretty much in alignment. By about a foot, it's setback.
I, I honestly, I think, you know, especially with just kind of the survey being in question and just a lot of unknowns to, to make an informed decision and to be completely fair to you. I, I think the best option at this point is to, let's defer it for 30 days. Request that you have property corners marked and/or survey if you so choose. That's your option, just to give us some time to, for all of us to go visit it and put eyes on it because of the picture is a little bit, kind of an odd angle. Just so we're, we're clarified on, on what we're trying to make a decision on. I just want to make sure we all make an informed decision on it. That's what I was just going to say. So when, when you talk about putting eyes on it, I don't think my eyes are, are going to be able to be any better than at the edge of the driveway in that picture because I can't go on the property. So I'm not sure what that, what that does.
You can with her permission.
Yeah, I'm sure she would welcome you to come look in it and around it. That, that wouldn't be a problem.
So in a sound like, maybe we either defer or we approve with the condition that the condition goes as stated.
And tie the two together. And just tying the two together. And not going up.
So, so which, which, and, and I know you probably can't really speak for her that much, but do we defer it or do we make a motion? Of course, we still have some other stuff to do before we can make the motion. But that's the simplest thing. I mean, you're, you're going to make a decision for her if she, that she can't do anything with that building other than tie in the house to that building?
I think she may want to elevate it aesthetically. I mean, that's, I think the whole reason that, 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 there's not a huge room up there. It's not livable, it's not a rental, it's just really just an aesthetic. You, you wouldn't want to just tie a structure together just to, just, just so we can get as close to the rules as possible. I think we want to have the best end product. That's just the way I look at it.
Okay, so then, so then that, that tells me we need to defer this to next month.
Yes, and I think she would welcome y'all to come out and take a look at the property, welcome you on to the property if that's what's needed.
Okay.
But I would say, based on what you just said and based on what he just said, once again, I go back to going out looking at property doesn't change this application. Do you see it, do you, do you see the, us going to see it changes the fact that they want to, they want to do a new build over the, o, 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 against the ordinance?
I get that, yeah.
Okay, all right, I'm. You know how I sit on it, so that's fine. I, I can, I don't need to.
So you're saying that if you, if you defer by, if the situation that we have forced here is correct, then then you require that we want to, uh, make our motion to approve the condition? Does the condition be that it is, uh, say?
And one other thing I want to do too is I want to review the rules. So if we do allow it to be tied in, can it be added on in the rear if provided there's room there? I know that you said there's not much room back there, but I just, I want to clarify. Yeah, that, that's still in question. I mean, even on this map, it shows the rear of that.
That right there shows the garage beyond the property. But you state that you know it's not.
No, it's not. It's, it's close though. There's just no room to go back, nor would I, I approve that. Because, because I own that, that piece of, uh, gosh, my, 413. So I wouldn't want any rear building.
The comment about elevating the garage, doesn't that constitute a new build? If you're elevating?
If you say.
I didn't understand when you were talking, being a layperson, I didn't understand what you meant by elevation.
If she, if you say she can't touch the structure, If she, if you say she can't touch the structure, it will maintain its current elevation, and it will not be elevated, and it won't be a new build, it will be an addition project. But she prefers to have a new structure there that looks like the old one but is elevated.
All right.
Well, what we've been saying here, if it's a new structure, that means it's gotta be moved over 20 inches.
Her preference would be a new build to bring in the aesthetic elevation of that, plus whatever else you wanted. Okay.
I would like to see the property myself with my own eyes, just so that if we do request that, if she wants a new build, it has to be brought over to the current setback, that that action can be done. But with these pictures and survey that we have here, I can't tell that with what we've got. So I think we need to defer this, I've said it 100 times.
If we're gonna defer it, I don't think it makes any difference what anybody's for or against, because we're not making a decision.
Is that correct? I didn't hear. From Mark.
Is that, you still have, I mean, I guess I can ask it, or if I just go ahead. Is anybody here for or against this application? No. You're for it? You're biased?
Okay.
Do you wanna, do you wanna step to the podium and give us your name and relationship to the project and see, tell us what you think?
Good morning, I'm William Joyner, and I reside at 110 Enclave Lane. And we've been on St. Simon's for, since 1992. Wesley's very meticulous with everything. He's taken care of my financial practice now. I'm, I've become an ambassador and his assistant. But he's learned a lot about new construction. We come from a long line of builders. It's the name Joyner, my dad was a builder, my granddad, et cetera, from South Georgia. But I didn't have the nerves to be a builder because of all the, like this today. But Wesley has done a good job trying to maintain the character of the historical aspects of his two buildings. And he's trying to help Katie, and they're best friends. From what I'm hearing, y'all should defer it, and Katie should get well. That would be my recommendation, not make a decision until you've had all your requests satisfied, the survey, the onsite visit, and clearing up the confusion about the corners of the garage and the house. That can only happen, I think, if you visit. Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
You're sir.
I appreciate your, I appreciate your dad comments. My son's the president of a large building company in Atlanta, and I'm real proud of him, just as you're proud of your son. I appreciate that from the dad perspective. Thank you.
Okay, we dotted the i's and crossed the t's, so do we wanna make the motion to postpone?
Yes.
Or do we wanna make a motion to?
I'll make a motion that we defer this to the next meeting for ZV 5314. So we can study this a little bit in more detail and get a better perspective on what they're asking for.
Okay. We have a second. All who's in favor of that motion? All who's against?
Three to two.
Okay, looks like we're on, see you next week.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. You want me to take this with me and bring it back?
Have a good day.
All right, that's, that's all we got for this meeting. Officially adjourned.